Hi, my name is Trey Reckling from the Academy of Cannabis Science and we would like to welcome you to another Saturday Sesh. We are pleased today to be joined by County Commissioner and former State Senator Tik Segerblom, a fourth generation representative from Nevada who is also a longtime cannabis advocate, who stood up against headwinds when other people weren't doing it, and not just for people, but for pets as well. Tik, thank you for being here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Or afternoon, I guess.
Afternoon.
So, and I want to give you space to introduce yourself a little better. I gave you just a thumbnail, but I know your history in the, as a representative and as an advocate is much deeper than that.
Yeah, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on myself, but I'll give you just a little background. So I'm basically a product of the 60s, went to college in the 60s. You know, was right there when people started using marijuana. It wasn't a big deal, but I knew firsthand that it was not an evil drug or so it wasn't devil's weed. After I left college, went to law school, I got into politics, worked for President Carter. I was in DC with him in the 70s and frankly, we were smoking weed in the White House. I mean, it was, it was that, I wouldn't say, anyway, it wasn't that big deal.
Really? Alright.
But, but when he left, when Reagan came in, that's when the whole thing flipped. And the war on drugs and just say no and, and everything started. And so I went from being something which was fun and accessible and not, not evil, to basically being heroin. So it was just, just pretty crazy how, and if you look back at the history, you'll see that it actually was used to demonize and incarcerate peoples of color. And also when Nixon did it against the hippies, which I guess I would have been considered one of them. But anyway, so at the end of the day, it was, you know, just watching it, I wasn't a big time user, but I used, you know, kept going and saw, you know, me and my friends who were basically white, little class professionals or whatever. It was not really a problem. If you ever got caught, you just throw it away, whatever, you wouldn't go to jail or be arrested for anything. But the flip side is, you know, African Americans were being tagged and penalized and felonies on their record and having to hire lawyers and just insane stuff. So, you know, I could see that it was injustice, but again, it was not what something I held to die for. But in 2000, Nevada, and after California, probably Washington state too, I'm not sure when Washington state did it. We had on the ballot a constitutional amendment to make medical marijuana legal. And that passed like with 60%, I think 65%. So the voters were already there in 2000, but it didn't have us, it allowed you to grow some, but didn't have any, anything else as far as how to buy it, how to sell it, how to make it. And so there was, there was always somebody in the legislature who would try to, you know, develop a system like you have in Washington or Colorado or wherever it were now. But regulated industry, but there wasn't all that's marijuana, we can't do that, we can't do that. And, and so it just never happened. And meanwhile, in Las Vegas, kind of industry sprouts, came to fruition where it was just like they'd have social clubs or they would barter or all kinds of ways to try to get around the law. Because the fact is, it was legal to have it, but you don't want to get it unless you grew six plants or whatever it was. So the cops were having a hard time arresting people and basically prosecuting people because they were, but luckily by the law, but the judge was starting to say, look, you can't have a law that says it's legal, but then no way to get it. And so even the cops were starting to say, wait, we need to do something. But anyway, fast forward, I was in the state legislature, state senator in 2012. Elected 2012, 2013, I was in the legislature, Colorado and Washington just passed it. I said, I'm gonna take this thing and try, try myself. People had tried it before, but they weren't really at my level. I was head of a committee, I was fairly well known in the state. So I figured I'm gonna put my reputation online and do this. Because, you know, just the right thing to do. But as I said earlier, the fact is, it turned out that the opposition wasn't that big deal. We passed it with two thirds of the votes, Republicans. My co-person was a big right wing Republican Mormon, who was into states' rights and said, you know, because we have the, since our constitution, we should have a right to use it. So we actually modeled our law after Arizona, which even had the industry, which is crazy. But we put in some things like mandatory testing, some really revolutionary things in our first law. So when our medical law passed, it was basically full-fledged dispensaries, recreational law, which most of the other states like Washington and California, you'd had a kind of a medical thing that kind of grown up in the back rooms and then into front rooms, but it never had been fully regulated and didn't have testing and had a lot of, it was just, it was a kind of a homegrown industry. So when you went rec, you had to go and go back and kind of establish a structure to your recreational. Whereas we start out with the structure from get-go, which I think was very beneficial for us. Because once we had our rec up, in 2016, we had on the ballot recreational, I mean, we had our medical up. In 2016, we had initiative to go rec. I was the co-chair of that campaign. And that did like 55%, which is what California got the same year. And then we were off to the races. So the law was supposed to implement in a year. We actually implemented in six months. We opened up the 1st of July after the legislature, because we were all set to go. He said to flip a switch, add 3%, on the cash register and we were off to the races. So, you know, we've had our own issues, but the truth is, I think as far as regulated industry, we've done very well. And we, our products and the variety of stuff, I think if you come to one of our big dispensaries, you'll see it's equal to anywhere. It's really phenomenal what, what, how, when you say let capitalism go to work, you can sell, anybody can sell to anybody else. So it's supposed to be a totally open market. And we've created some great little producers, great, everything has grown, most everything has grown inside growers. And then we have like Plant 13, if you ever heard of that, but it's a huge dispensary. It's really more of an entertainment complex than it is just a dispensary. So we're, we really have, I think, we're at the forefront because we're tied into tourism. That's what we, that's what I see it as. I see it as, as where we can be like the Amsterdam. If you're thinking marijuana around the world, come to Las Vegas, because we're gonna have the most fun, the best experiences. And so, so in 2018, I guess it was, I left the legislature and came to the state, I mean, to the county commission, which in Nevada is actually a very big deal. The strip is in my district. So I'm, it's unincorporated, so I'm like the mayor of the strip and the city councilman of the strip. So it's a great job. And I went there, among other things, hoping to then establish the next thing, which I think is social use. We've got, we've got it. Now we have to figure out how to have it where people can use it for, you know, parties, for dinner, for shows, for music, for Pilates, for yoga, for health, I mean, just massage. I mean, whatever it is, you can have that tied to marijuana where it just really blows the roof off. So we were all set to do that in 2000, when I got elected in 2000, I started 2019. But the hotels got wind of this or they could see what was gonna come. And they kind of panicked because they could see that if this industry started outside of them, I guess I gotta, I gotta have myself. So the problem is, is the hotels, because they're federally regulated and it's still federally illegal, they can't have it inside the hotels, which is our big industries, you know. So we created like a nascent industry kind of around the strip where we had these, these dispensaries and, but we didn't have any place where the tourists could actually use it. And so the hotels were looking at this thinking, oh my God, if this thing gets any bigger, these people, supposedly the number one Uber driver in the country was from one of the hotels to one of the dispensaries. You know, it was just, it was made in heaven and people would actually go back and use it even though they weren't allowed to. But anyway. So the hotels seen that this was creating something that they wanted to have inside, got the legislature, because they kind of control the legislature, to pass a bill saying we can't do social use. So we're frozen on anything dealing with usage until next July. And our legislature starts meeting February and so hopefully this next session, they will, the legislature will come back with a bill and some kind of a law, which gives us a framework to start going forward with with social use. But, but again, that's, that's my big thing is that's, that's the next frontier. And I just think the sky's the limit. I mean, because once we can do that, then that opens it up much more to other people. And then especially if you have a tourist destination or even a reservation, this is a great opportunity for people to come and, and use it and then use it in other frameworks. And ultimately, you know, I mean, even though everybody says, oh, you can't have it without alcohol, it's gonna have to be part of a bar scene too, where you can do it all, as long as you don't get in the car when you walk out the door. But to follow up on Lana's point, the other thing I did when I was in the legislature, I passed a bill which allows the tribes to enter the compacts with the state to so they can be part of the marijuana system. So they have their own dispensaries, grows, whatever, but they can also buy in the system or they can sell into the system. They have to tax themselves, just like they would be taxed if they were a regular one, but their taxes don't go to the state. They stay within the reservation. But, but I'm not sure if it's still the biggest one, but the probably second largest dispensary in the world is right downtown Las Vegas, the Paiuts, Las Vegas Paiut Reservation, which is a great used dispensary. And they are right now building, they actually built a lounge inside there because they don't have, they're out there by state laws. They actually have a little mini lounge where you can go in and buy dabs and joints and things and sit there and you can use them. And it was very successful until, you know, COVID came along and had to shut everything down. But they've also gone way up north, right up on the Oregon border, the Fort McDermott tribe. And they have like, I think 10 acres outside grow that they just harvested back in October. And I forget how many thousands of pounds they harvested, but they're taking that, they're gonna make oil out of it and then bring it into the system. So this tribe has like 500 people that don't have no jobs at all. It's the first jobs they've ever had. And they're actually, they're getting paid good money and it just makes you want to cry. There's also another town up north called Elko, which is in kind of northeast Nevada. And the tribe there has a colony right downtown in Elko. Elko County, it's county option, the Elko wouldn't, wouldn't do a dispensary. So the tribe opened a dispensary. So they, they just got a check for a million dollars, the first time they ever had actual cash that they could actually use. They bought, bought computers and stuff for their kids. But it is a great, great economic resource for tribes.
That's great. And Elko is a mining town, I believe, right?
Right, yeah. Even though the mines don't like it, the miners obviously are lined up out the door.
For sure, for sure. And you know, we have the same challenge here in the state of Washington where public consumption is against the law. It's only like a $37 ticket, but it's still against the law technically. But if you don't own your home and you're renting either a hotel room or an apartment, or especially homeless people have no place to legitimately consume without breaking the law. So that's something we're still challenged with here. So we're gonna have to keep our eyes on what you all are doing and see if we can follow your lead. And, because we'd like, we'd like to get some traction on that, just as a right to use issue here in the state.
Yeah, I did say, I'd love to see, but I just see Nevada, that's, that's where we can really jump out the rest of the world. I mean, because that's what we do is entertainment. We have these huge venues for all these musicians and things. And what better place than to come to Las Vegas, you know, and use marijuana and go to a concert or go to a great dinner or, and you don't have to have to get in the car, you can just walk around. So, I just, I just, I don't understand why people don't see what I see, which is like the future, but hopefully it'll come.
Well, and you know, I could have started with this, but I, I want to back up and say the, the reason that I know you or sort of know you is in 2015, you proposed, like you talk about being ahead of the curve. In 2015, when we were just starting this idea to start, to create an academy of cannabis science and partner with accredited schools, before that even was rolling, you were busy proposing to allow pets to use cannabis. And although it wasn't successful, because I think you got some pushback from the AVMA on a national level, you wrote me back, some guy you didn't know from another state who you had no connection to, and said, hey, it was just a thank you because our dog had a major stroke, she was a senior dog and had a major stroke and we saved her life with cannabis. Told you the story and you were so supportive and said, hey, if I can ever help you, let me know. And then you, you wrote back and said, hey, did you see what Dennis Miller had to say about me to Bill O'Reilly? And I guess they were, they were picking on you because you had not won and they thought it was a silly thing to give pot to pets. Of course, some people assume that's for, you know, to get them high and you and I know better that it's strictly for medical reasons. But I want to thank you for that because, you know, a lot of times pets are left out of this conversation. And just like us, they get arthritis and pains and epilepsy and
Allergies.
Allergies for sure, all kind of conditions we can help them with, so.
Yeah, and that was so funny because I had what I call an ominous bill. So it had just, you know, 30 different little, because we passed it 2013, so 2015 we came back and just tweaked a lot of things. And one of the things, somebody reached out to me and said, let's do something about pets. So I threw that in there. It's just one little section of this huge bill. And then the summary came out at the very beginning of the bill where it summarizes. The first thing it says was marijuana for dogs or marijuana for pets. And that hit the press and went national or international. And vibe was the laughing stock of the world. And Dennis Miller was on Fox News laughing about me and it's like, but truthfully, I do, I was ahead of the curve. And it was, I was right. It's like, now it's like, hello, how, how crazy was that?
Well, and you know what's so crazy is because of that and because in an article I read, they talked about a veterinarian named Dr. Tim Schu out of California has a product called Canapet. Well, we since met Dr. Schu and formed an alliance. He helped to author our Pets and Cannabis class, which we have taught now to people as far away as a group of veterinarians in New Delhi, India. So because of you, we're training veterinarians as far away as India about the benefits of cannabis for pets. So I wanted to save and make that connection with you live. But thank you, on behalf of us and a lot of pets that are gonna benefit.
Wow, I appreciate that connection. People were laughing at me for quite a while, but.
No, that was, that was a real deal and it took root in ways that you might not have anticipated. So do you find yourself having to defend your position even now? Or do you feel like the headwinds have slowed down and people because of economics and other reasons?
Truthfully, you know, I mean, people make fun of me. I've known as the godfather of marijuana in Nevada. But, you know, it's a badge I wear with honor and I'm open about it and, you know, I think people accept it. And the truth is, economically, the taxes are more than we've ever anticipated. It's the only industry right now in Las Vegas that is actually increasing. Our gaming, our tourism is down the tube, but in a depression, people smoke marijuana. So it's, the taxes are up and I think we're probably keeping a lot of people sane right now. So.
For sure, for sure. And.
I'm just very proud of it and I have my own strain, although I'm not sure if it's still that active right now. But my, one of the dispensaries called up and said, we got this strain out of California called Bloody Susan. This is back when we were medical. We're not wanting to use that tied to medical, so can we name it Segerblom Hayes? And so I asked my family, my kids, I said, what do you think? Is that gonna make a joke? They said, no, that's great, Dad. So I went ahead and so there's that strain out there. And again, that's one of those things where people attack me for it, but truth is, most people love it.
That's great. Not, not many people get a whole cultivar named after them. That's fantastic. You know, I've been dominating your time and I want to open the floor a little bit because I know other people want to engage you and talk to you and ask you some questions. So we'll do that right now. If anybody has a question, feel free to step up and unmute yourself and say hello.
I'll be the first to jump in. Oh wait, no, go ahead Eugene.
You'll have to unmute Eugene.
I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry Chuck, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I know you have more important questions than me, definitely.
Two questions for you, Your Honor. So first one, business-wise, we have four new states to look at. In particular, I'm looking at South Dakota and Montana are gonna be establishing their industries as we move along. Curious if you have any tips or hints or suggestions as we start two new states. Maybe people might be heading over there, moving there, going there for those opportunities. And second question, more relevant, is consumption lounges. It's a personal thing for me. It's a big thing for the alliance. And you're dealing with the federally regulated casino industry out there. And yet you guys still managed to pull off a consumption lounge. So do you have any good, more good advice for us on how we can conquer this? Especially considering in Washington, there's a smoking ban. You can't smoke anything indoors where there's employees. And we need to figure out something where people can do more than just vape or take edibles.
Yeah, actually, on the second point, that, that's a great point, which is we actually have a great indoor air act because it only covers cigarettes. And it's just even, even isn't that, casinos you can still smoke in. So it's not that restrictive. But, but the fact that it doesn't even cover marijuana means that we could have restaurants and you could even have a restaurant that opened one night, one night a week with marijuana and it wouldn't be a, be a problem.
Gray Air, did you say that's what the Nevada statute is?
I'm just saying that we have a great one. We have a Clean Air Act, but it's, it's, it's very loose. And it's always meant, it's always specific to cigarettes too. So, so you can, with marijuana, once we're able to do it, we can do anything with it as far as bars, restaurants, anything. So that's why I think we're, we're so perfect for the whole thing. But, you know, it's, I've, I was recently involved in a legal seminar with the director of Denver. Denver has a social use ordinance. West Hollywood has a social use ordinance and San Francisco. So the four of us were in this, on this panel, for a legal panel. And there's just lots of ideas out there as far as how to do this, the social use. But it really is trying to, it's the next step as far as overcoming public interest and particularly the police. You know, police just, just, that's, they can hold in on that, oh, you're gonna drive up and go in there and smoke a joint and then come back and get in your car and kill the world. And I say, well, you ever hear what a bar is? They wouldn't go and test everybody, walked out of a bar and took out the car. But again, it's just, it's so easy to, to jump on that it's, it's one of those things where we just have to kind of educate people. And then maybe just what, it's really, it's up to the political, what you can do politically. The other thing that's a little bit complicated is I want to use it for social justice things. Right now, our industry is very male, white dominated. We designed it originally that way to, because we want to make sure that people that were involved have a financial ability. So we had very strict rules as far as how much money you had to have and, and it was very expensive to get into it. But it ended up resulting in, you know, the rich getting richer, so to speak. So I'm thinking social use is where we can try to bring in people of color and lower economic and maybe even do some social justice with people have criminal records and things. But then you're in this position where you're, you're competing with the existing dispensaries. And that's where they freak out. So again, all this is politics. It's just whatever that you can get through the legislature or through your local government. And they're very powerful. So I'm, what I'm looking at to start with at least is to allow each dispensary to have a social use tied to them or associated with them. But also then to have these other places where to start with, they can have delivery. So you can go in there and whatever it is, if you want to, if it's a lounge or it's a restaurant or yoga studio or something, you, you can, there'll be a menu there, but you'll, you'll write it down and then you'll have a particular dispensary deliver. And it could either be tied to a dispensary where there's co-ownership or it could be any dispensary you want can deliver. Because we have, we have delivery from everywhere. But something like that where it's not, the dispensaries are getting a piece of the action too. But then hopefully they have to share their, their profits with that local entity. So there's some, so we've been bringing minorities and women and people that have been kind of left out. But it's the, really the, it's just, it's whatever you can think of. We have people come to me all the time, I want to do a marijuana hotel, you know, just crazy things. But truthfully, why not? And if it works, it works. If it doesn't, then we'll try something else. It's just getting the will to get it through some kind of legislation and have some, some kind of structure where you can experiment without like saying everybody in the world can do this. So I think try to have models, have first 10 people to come in and offer this. You know, we'll, we'll work with you to try to see if it works. And if it works, then we'll allow more. But anyway, it's, it's, it's just, it's such a natural, it's just hard to believe how everything goes better with marijuana.
And thank you for, for not leaving out groups of people who've been left out before, not just left out, but ruined. You know, families crushed by laws and unequal treatment. So thank you for that.
The flip side of that is though, a lot of these, these states are trying to start out with, with social equity. And truly, it's a problem because to try to get it right, it just takes forever. And then there's litigation and it can set you back years, just trying to get that right. Whereas to me, it's better off to get the industry up and running and then kind of force social justice as opposed to start with social justice. Because there's so many other aspects to try to get it up and running. Then if you do that too, and try to make sure everyone's protected and gets to participate, that is very difficult.
Well, it's amazing that you all got rolling with, with adult use in six months. I mean, those of you on the call who know what's involved with working with regulators, that's amazing. I mean, not to mention you have to have crops in place and everything else.
Yeah, it just, it was, it was not by, I mean, I originally thought, well, we can, because when we passed our medical, we knew already, we went to Colorado, we saw what recreational was gonna be. So that was my goal in the end. But, but it was a lot of luck just designing it from the get-go, our medical program. So it could just, literally it was just flipping the switch. Midnight, it became recreational. And the downside was, of course, that all the medical stuff became recreational and the stores got wiped out. And the governor had to declare an emergency. It was, it was a national news about an emergency because there's a marijuana shortage. It wasn't really a shortage, but anyway, to do some regulations, he had to declare an emergency. But, but anyway, it did end up with a few medical people missing out on some of their stuff and maybe the prices went up a little bit at the beginning. But, but there wasn't that long till the, till the system expanded and then there was more stuff available. And truthfully, now, if you're in medical, there's more quality, more variety than there ever has been. So the recreational, I think, really does ultimately improve the medical too.
Eugene, thank you for standing by.
Oh, thank you. I was actually on the same page with Chuck and the question about the launches and, yeah. So good ideas from Tik about, you know, connecting the dispensaries with all those businesses, hotels, maybe. But my next question would be basically, you know, the heated conversation right now with this new bill about a cap or uncap. So basically, if you want to connect those businesses, so how you, what's your opinion on that and how, what's your takeout on this cap or uncap to control the amount of, you know, the product, the medicine going through all this system?
Do you mean a cap on licenses to?
No, 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 not on licenses, on the, basically on licenses and the, you know, the amount of goods and, you know, the medicine and the plants and hemp and, yeah, so.
Production of it.
Production limits.
I appreciate it. The production, yes. So if you want to open these launches or if you want to find a way to connect those businesses, basically to expand and at the same time, you want to put a cap on the production. So how you deal with that and what's your opinion? What's your?
Well, I mean, I think everyone agrees that ultimately, the biggest problem is gonna be an oversupply. I mean, at the end of the day, it's a weed and it grows pretty easily. And it hasn't happened here yet. And I think even in Colorado, these other places, it's still, I think, the price hasn't dropped too low. But at some point, it's gonna be like a hundred dollars a pound. And that's gonna really hurt a lot of these independent growers. There's a place here in Las Vegas called Flower One. It's a Canadian company, but they bought a old indoor facility that grew cucumbers. And it's like almost a square mile of underground. I mean, it's covered that they're growing marijuana in there. And that, I guess they've had problems with trying to get the quality. But if that ever, just ultimately, they can do that successfully, that, just that amount of weed itself is gonna wipe things out. Then of course, the tribes are growing, you know, acres up in northern California, northern Nevada. Another thing that's interesting is, you know, we, when we started this out, we started looking at the demand and the demand would, the summer was always good and then September was good. And then for some reason, October and November, it just dropped. And somebody finally figured out what's, all the weed from northern California and southern Oregon was just flowing in and the black market just, just wiped out the recreational dispensaries. So that, there's that too. I mean, if, if. So that there's that too. I mean, if 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 that ever got, if we ever allowed the each one state to sell to the other state, then I think California would wipe us all out. So in the short term, I think it's important that that each state be allowed to control how much they grow and how much they do that. You know, we have a limited number of licenses, but each grow license can, there's no cap on how much you can actually grow under that license. They they are trying to monitor if the state is to make sure we don't have too much supply. But, you know, it it it's it's a regulated industry right now and which which is good in the sense that it it allows it to to grow and and a lot of money coming in and things. But at the end of the day, I mean, if you look at how how unregulated alcohol is, even though alcohol is regulated, this is much less impactful than alcohol. I mean, that it's it's I I think ten years, there won't even be regulation. It'll just be, you know, whatever you can do. And then then it'll be more of a of a of a science and also an art as far as this is from this this region of Washington State or this is from this strain or or I mean, the 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 types of of combinations they're doing for for between, yeah, starting taking CBD and THC and mixing the combinations and it's just just phenomenal, the different kinds of products.
I agree. I think we'll get a lot more conversation like we have around wine with terroir and individual notes and and, you know, teaching people to train their nose and or rather taste buds. So, you know, I think we're we're likely to see continued evolution of people's skills and and recognizing good product, especially.
Yeah, and I I think to the extent that there are people who who honestly can tell the difference and 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 explain that difference, that's going to be the demand. I mean, right now, recently, we had the bud tenders and they were, they would, they're salespeople, basically. So they would sell this or whatever. And and they understood the difference. Something puts you to sleep and something that makes you wired about they, as far as the little idiosyncrasies about, well, if you've got Crohn's, this is good or da da da. But I think tho those kind of specialists who actually understand the different ingredients and how they work on different people and and can say, try this, and then if it doesn't work, try that or combine this and maybe even have a apothecary where you come back and we we mix it for you right there with the different things and try it out. I think that's going to be a huge industry because the fact is it treats so many different you know, problems that you know, it's just it's it's very exciting that way.
Oh, a compounded chemist in the cannabis space. That's really interesting. That's that's a good thought. The, let me open the floor or make sure I'm 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 looking at all opportunities here for you all to interact. Who else has a question?
Actually, I have to go. I'm sorry, but I would like to be, if you'd put me back in the string next time. I'm sorry, I have a another commitment.
Oh, sure.
But thank you. It's also nice to hear from you, Tick. And that's a a cool name. I just want to say, all right, you guys have a, y'all have a nice afternoon. Hopefully, I'll see you again.
Thanks, Katie. Stay warm.
Lucky Ohio.
All right. Thank you. Bye bye.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd just like to make a statement. When I fell in love with cannabis, I took the course back in Vermont, the Cannabis Science and Medicine. And what Tick's talking about is is really the the avenue that I've been on to grow strains that are specific to the needs of the people, you know, what whatever the conditions are. And and I have a few of those that that over the years have been successful. And so there's just so much more to it, you know, little old me just I'm 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 happy with where I am, but but that's a great conversation, Tick, about about cannabis strains to address specific medical needs.
Yeah, and you know, one of the interesting things when I first got involved and and it was opened up some stuff out there, I'd go to parties and people I I didn't know or I'd known forever, but had no idea. They go up and say, well, thank you for doing this. I've been doing this behind the underground for fifty years or, you know, my wife has this. What do you think about that? Or I mean, it's just amazing how many people in my generation, you know, are interested in it or taking it or, you know, for sleep or whatever. I mean, it's just it really does. I I thought this is all, the medical thing was just a bullshit way to get it. So people could have a good time. But the truth is that there is a real medical component to it. And and compared to any other medicine, it is so much better. And if you can stop taking sleeping pills and take this stuff, there's no question. I even would have to use less.
For sure. And and Eugene, if I could ask a question real quick, because I know we have, we have lobby days coming up here soon in our state and that's when the citizens will go and and talk to our representatives in Olympia about, you know, continuing to change laws. As you know, the fight is not over once you have legal cannabis. And so do you have any advice? Because I'm sure you've been approached by people with with great approaches and people with approaches that needed some polish. So any any advice you would have for those of us who will be speaking to lawmakers that either do's or don'ts or or best practices?
Well, I hate I hate to be judgmental, but I will say that when when the industry come, well, the industry can come as far as the ownership and they're in suit and ties and look like, you know, from Wall Street. But when the smaller industry or the the patients come, they've got pink hair and beads and, I mean, they they just for every reason, they seem to be the hippies that, you know, we we've gotten away from. So they're they're, as they start to talk and they're talking about well, I I I take this juice every day. I I I grow twelve plants, I need twenty plants and and I mean, the legislators, my experience, their eyes just gloss over and they just, they just don't get it, even though it's heartfelt and there's meaning there. And really, we need to address those people. But so to the extent that you can you know, try to find professionals who understand the legislature and then have your spokespeople at least be people who don't appear to be from the sixties. I I think it adds credibility to what you're trying to accomplish. But I don't know how it is in Washington State, but here it's always, we need to be able to grow more plants ourselves because we have specific things we do and we may, so we make this juice every day and we can't afford to to go buy the stuff, which is legitimate.
Certainly legitimate. And we don't have a a right to grow privilege here unless you're a patient. If you are a patient, you can you can grow a few, but everybody else is locked out. So we're working on that, members of the Alliance, to address that question or that that right as well.
Yeah, and here, even the patients, unless you were a patient, like two thousand sixteen, new patients can't grow unless you're like fifty miles from a dispensary or something. So it's I'm not sure that the cops really monitor that closely, but if you
And and Tick, let me ask you a question. You know, there's a growing interest, and this is not cannabis, but there's a growing interest in psilocybin medicine and other entheogens or psychedelics for legitimate medical purposes like PTSD and and depression. We know Johns Hopkins has been doing research on this for over fifteen years and and doing some real high level research and and discovery. We know Oregon and Denver and some other places have decriminalized psychedelics for medical purposes. Do you have a position on that that you'd be willing to share or or any thoughts on that? Because I imagine that same conversation is coming to Nevada, just like it's coming to Washington. Do you have an opinion on that yet?
No, totally. I support. I mean, the war on drugs is over and we lost. So I think we've got to decriminalize all drugs. I mean, the reality is I don't want you to use heroin, but you shouldn't go to prison because you're using it. And we need to find a way to address people that have heroin. And I've had a bill in the legislature, which I've been amazed no one's ever followed up on where we actually have like like in Vancouver, where you actually can go in and and get heroin injections. Because why should people, again, if you if you have to go out on the street and get it, then you're going to have to rob somebody and then go buy it, which is so you're making somebody a felon by selling it and you're making yourself a felon by buying it. Let's just have places where if you need that, you can come here and we'll give it to you. So I mean, psilocybin seems to work LSD and all that stuff seems to have real benefits. But if nothing else, if that's what people want to do, as long as what we should do is is make it available and then tax it or tax something and then provide the re the treatment programs like in Portugal where you can have it, but you also have to really talk to us about trying to get treatment and get off of it. But it's just, so I I had the bill in the legislature to talk about that, but I could never get it. That was one I never could get past first base on, but it's just a matter of time. And in Nevada, it's probably going to take, because I'm not in the legislature anymore, it's a state law, it'll probably take an initiative which in Nevada are pretty tough. But I think truthfully, if it were on the ballot, the the, as you saw in Oregon, I think fifty five percent or sixty percent of the people voted for it. People are there. The people realize that that making drugs, especially when you look at at what's happened with oxycodone and everything, everybody has a personal experience of somebody who's just whose family member OD'd, I mean, they went to the doctor and got stuff and then it's just this tragic about the people we have killed just just out of ignorance.
For sure, for sure. And and right rightly so that the war on drugs has been lost at great expense to individuals, you know, and never be able to undo.
You you couldn't think of a stupider thing than than, as I said, when when I was with Carter, we were all set to go one way. And because he lost, you know, we lost forty years. Just lost.
And and some of you on the call might or might be aware, but I'm proud of my Georgia president, who has been one of, I think, one of our best ex-presidents to date and but he did propose to decriminalize up to one ounce of personal or personal possession of cannabis up to an ounce in, I think it was seventy eight. And so well ahead of the curve. So glad to hear that you were part of that effort and and part of that team. We know things, you know, took a radical turn and and politics matter and votes matter. And so just to reinforce a point that everybody knows, the
So on that point, I mean, the fact that the House Representative yesterday voted to decriminalize marijuana is is such a huge step, just a huge step. I'm a Bernie Sanders supporter and I can remember in two thousand fourteen, I think it was, when I was thinking about running for the first time, I had met with him and talked about this and he at the time said, he wasn't there, but he was ready to at least think about it. But he but literally at that time, no presidential candidate even mentioned the word marijuana. And today, all the Democrat candidates were there, they're they're they were out, other than Biden, they got one, they were like, fold, let's go for it. But I mean, here's the House Representatives.
Yeah, I guess. I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's a great point. Sorry to interrupt into joining the conversation late, but with the House passing that Moore Act yesterday and basically with, I mean, even getting support from about five Republicans, I I believe, what are your thoughts or beliefs about the Senate actually taking some real consideration into decriminalizing on a national level?
You know, I I I I think it's it's crazy this politically because they're stupid. I think if if we don't win those two seats in in Georgia, it won't happen in the Senate for for this next two years. But I think Biden can do a lot of stuff, like take it off Schedule One just by himself. So hopefully he'll do that and and just start that process. Because a lot of stuff you can do administratively, but but it just, I mean, you you couldn't design a stupider thing for Republicans to do is to is to be anti-marijuana. I mean, it's this, if anywhere you look, it always polls better than anybody else. It beat Trump in every state, the states that won. Since Trump won, it was higher than Trump was. So I mean, it's everybody, libertarians, Republicans, Democrats, everybody loves independence.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's an issue beyond or a substance beyond party, we hope. And so we just have to keep keep reminding folks of that. I want to be respectful of everybody's time and Eugene, I'm sorry, I'm not getting back to you, but I want to be respectful of everybody's time. We did schedule this for an hour. We are so grateful to you, Tick, for taking time today. As part of that, thanks, we want to scholarship you to courses. So I'm going to follow up with you. And if you have any interest or time in taking some of our courses, especially the ones hosted by our partners at UNLV, we'd be happy to set you up with that. And 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 we would love to kind of open the door to the Cannabis Alliance and say that, you know, you can always lean on us for an opinion or another voice. And and if we can do anything, I know we're outside of the state, but if we can do anything to help in your efforts there, please let us know.
I will. Absolutely. And thank you. Reach out to me and I'd love to talk to your UNLV class too.
Excellent. Would would love to have you. And so thank you so much for your time. Thank you, everybody, for joining today and
Thank you.
Absolutely.
For being involved. Very fun.
Thank you all so much and have a good have a good Saturday.